Order, it is seven oh two according to panel time. You're all set right now that I've called it order. Welcome everybody at home. Before I ask everybody to introduce themselves here, I want to just read our agenda for this evening. Tuesday, July 16th, 2019. This is the panel planning commission. The first thing we're going to do is approve tonight's agenda. Second, we'll open this up to public comment. Third, we need to approve the minutes of May 21st. Then we need to approve the minutes of May 18th. Then we need to approve the minutes of July 9th. Under all business, Mr. Jim Sullivan of the B C R C is here to continue our bylaw work. And under new business, Fred Miller will be interviewing our fourth and final candidate for zoning administrator. Last thing we'll do is just go over the mail quickly and call it a night. So we can all get out and enjoy the nice warm summer weather.
Call it a night.
Amen. Second.
Second.
Does that have to be on the agenda? All right, so let's start for everybody's viewing pleasure at home. I'd like to start up there in the corner, the guy with the Mets hat, and go around and introduce yourselves.
Ron Bezen.
Sid Smithers.
John Boucher.
Mike Slattery.
Jessica Witherell.
Jim Winchester.
Megan Randall.
Rose Marie Pelletier.
Michelle Peckro.
Thank you, everybody.
Jim Sullivan, I'm with the regional planning commission.
Beautiful. Appreciate it. Okay, let's take a look at that. Before mentioned agenda that I just read, do I have a motion to approve that agenda?
So.
I'll second.
So we have a motion, Megan, we have a second, Rose Marie. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Fred, you got any comment? Nothing yet? I know you're gonna have some comments later, but I just thought I'd get to you if you had anything else on your mind. All right, let's take a few minutes and look at the minutes of May 21st. Which I know I have in here right.
Yeah, they should be. I turned them in order.
Yeah, I know, but remember I had mine with me. Yeah. I can look at them, I can look at them right here. Right? There's May 21st.
I wasn't present for the meeting, but I'll move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
You can do that. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Epstein.
Epstein.
Okay. Let's take a look at the June 18th minutes, which was our last regular meeting. Thank you to Rose Marie for taking notes during that meeting. I don't think we can approve these.
There's not enough.
Barbara True Weber's not here for that, so Rose.
But.
That would only leave four people.
So we need five.
Okay, so table that.
We need five. We need five, or do we need form of the people who are here to approve minutes?
I think you need four of seven. Okay, we're now nine.
We're nine.
We're nine.
Okay, so let's table the June 18th. So I'll give you those, that one back. And let's take a look at the last Tuesday, July 9th minutes. This one here, we've got Slattery, Smithers, Rose Marie, Megan, and Shaw. We've got plenty of ammo to sign off on this one if we can come to an agreement. Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
So we could.
Yeah.
After the addition.
Jessica pointed out before we get to our discussion that she didn't put in anything on our, on our, two things, on our straw vote that evening and on okaying Fred to come in tonight. And assuming there were extenuating circumstances, which there were, so I just want wording to the effect of straw vote, is that what we call it Sid? Straw vote was taken, the three candidates that interviewed that evening.
Should the candidate hear what our?
No, we're not gonna say what it is.
No, no.
We're just gonna say straw vote was taken.
That evening.
Another one will be taken tonight.
Okay, gotcha.
And that we agreed that if Fred had extenuating circumstances, he should be allowed to come tonight. So.
Okay, if we are taking a straw vote tonight, should that be reflected in the agenda?
No.
Well, Fred, the interviewer.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as we're interviewing him, we're ready to make a recommendation after tonight.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll ask the board to stay at the conclusion to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
I suggest that the minutes be amended just to reflect those two things. One, there was a straw vote taken, and two, Mr. Miller was invited to return for an interview at this meeting if there were extenuating circumstances which prevented him from being there at the last meeting, which the chair has determined there are.
I have a motion.
That's a form of a motion.
I have a second. Any further discussion about the July 9th minutes? If none.
July 9th, yes. I think it's confusing, it's confusing to me. It says the zoning administrator, Nelson Brownell's term, the zoning administrator ends July 2nd, 2019. Now, this is after that. And then it says there are currently no applications for this position.
Yeah, that's, I did that.
And then where are we?
Yeah.
Are we as minutes? So there weren't at the time of July 2nd, probably?
No, that's not true.
That's not true?
Let's just strike that. So let's have, just strike that where it says zoning administrator.
You can say his zoning administrative term ends July 2nd.
Don't read the last part of that, because Fred will hear it and he won't want to apply.
Oh.
All right.
I'm sure Fred is well aware.
Yeah, so there'll be three, so let's add the third amendment of striking that.
Okay.
So along with the prior two amendments, give me a new motion for the, all three amendments, please.
Okay. I move that the minutes show the following changes, to remove the paragraph saying zoning administrator, the termination, or end that sentence of July 2nd, 2019.
Do it.
Okay, so strike the last sentence in that. Add that a straw poll was taken at that meet, at the meeting whose minutes these reflect, and that the board unanimously decided to invite Fred Miller to come to this meeting to interview for that position, given an excused absence.
Good motion. Second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? You think that was a five-hour meeting that took us so long? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion, minutes as amended carries, and when you, I'll be able to sign that when you show me. All right. Housekeeping, housekeeping. All right, warrants? Oh, no, wait, that's the select word. Hold on. Okay. All right. Next up, number six. I don't know where to put you, so I'll put you under old business. I hope you don't mind.
I'll go whenever.
It's no reflection.
Doesn't say tired in his head.
No, that's what I mean. I'm never quite sure what old business versus new business means, so.
Continuing business.
Welcome, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you. I said I got my notes on section 40 over the weekend, which was later than I would ordinarily do. I was away for a couple of weeks, so I apologize for that. So as we go forward, you know, I think the idea was to get any feedback from you on the draft to date that I have put together. And I did send that out and file back. I apologize for some of my town panel emails that bounced back at me.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's what happens.
You can't look at the town website to get people's email addresses, because they're wrong.
We're gonna get you an updated.
Even I just, you know, reply all to the ones that I get and they bounce back.
I do too.
I don't know why that happens, but it does. So I started sending stuff to Mike and asking him to pass it around to you guys. But now, thank you, I've got alternative emails, so I will.
The aliases.
I will build a double-duty email list and try to get everything to everybody.
So that's to our personal email?
No, it's our alias.
Your alias.
So instead of planning two or planning three, you have, you know, rose dot Marie Tyson. I don't know how hers would be.
So hopefully, hopefully the communication thing will be straightened out.
Okay.
So I, so before I went away on vacation, I sent out the draft of sections one through three that looks like this. And I know that Sid had a chance to look it over and make some comments, which we can maybe go over as we go over this draft. And then I said over the weekend, I sent out my review notes on section four. So I, after we go through the draft, then I can just kind of go over those and get your feedback. That's basically what we did with the last meeting with section three. And then for the next meeting, I will draft, incorporate an updated section four into the draft and send out notes on section five, if that makes sense.
That's pretty optimistic to have number four all wrapped in there with the first three.
Well, you know, it's section on administration, so it's not, I don't think, too complicated. Section five, I think, is going to be a bit more of an effort, because that deals with a lot of the individual zoning districts.
I'll ask the group, has everybody had a chance, or are you prepared tonight to discuss one, two, the draft, and one, two, or three? We've already discussed the content of it with Jim. So now he's put it in draft form. I've got four more copies of Sid's in color, his edits on that, which I'll, can pass around. And we don't have a color printer here, so yeah, if we could get people to share, that would be great.
Jim, is this?
So we'll start there, Jim. We'll just kind of run through this as to.
Sure, you go.
Sure, and so in my draft, and Sid just added some edits to my draft, the new slash change language is underlined. And Sid's corrections and revisions and questions are in color. And thank you, by the way, Sid. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, because too often a lot of those grammar and spelling.
Were it not for my assistant, they would be handwritten.
Okay. So anyway, it's very helpful. So, you know, again, a lot of this, you know, we discussed at some length at the last meeting. So, you know, section one, there's just a title. Section two is just a restated purpose. And Sid's changed, changed development to use of land and development, which I think is a good change, because.
Do we need that comma after land?
I put it in there to distinguish, to set off, excuse me, the next phrase, which is and development in the town.
All right.
I'll let you guys decide on the commas.
That's Megan's role here.
That's my main expertise.
You know, one of the intents in rewriting.
She the proofreader?
Yeah. It's an important role. One of the, you know, the things we wanted to do in the purpose was to, you know, highlight, you know, economic prosperity and quality of life to a greater extent than it was in the original one. So that's kind of the way we rewrote that. There weren't any other changes. Sid made a couple of cut typos and syntax errors in section 3.3 at the bottom.
Yeah, and we're, we've kind of boiled that down a little bit, because we had somehow an insert added on November 10th, 2011. So I've got a 3.3 here in the book, and I've got a 3.3 that reads slightly different over here. I don't ever recall, there's no record of us voting on it in 2011. I don't know how I got there, but there it is. Taped officially.
I think we did vote on it, it's taped in my copy.
Yeah. So I, that kind of, it says here, a big star, see previous page, see something. I can't read Julie's writing, previous page.
See previous for insertion.
Insertion. See insertion. So I think the, your 3.3 that Jim worked on and that you changed replaces that taped-in one. And this one, we can actually strike.
3.3.2 has changed, amended in November 10, 2011.
Okay.
Does have a different concept in it, talks about access to private camps.
That's right.
That's right.
And that's not dealt with in 3.3 access.
It's not.
As printed, nor was this available, I suspect, to Jim.
I did not have the little tape.
Yeah, you didn't have the little tape in. The question is whether we want to deal with access to private camps.
I think we need to. We don't have to do it tonight, and I'll tell you why. It was a pretty big issue here, and this, I don't think, happened in 2011. I thought it happened actually later. I thought it was 2013, 2014, where we had property owners fighting over what was once just a given, that somebody could access their camp through somebody else's property, and then that person was suddenly told they couldn't do it anymore. So we needed to do something at that time, so that's when we amended the bylaw. We don't have to do it tonight. I'll tear my little folder, my little sticker up and give it to you.
I can certainly, if you guys have all been through a process on that, I can sort of just add that to 3.3.
Yeah, just that. 3.31, 3.32, in addition to just 3.3. So, okay.
What are we gonna do?
We're going to allow him to rewrite the draft utilizing this, since the work was already done on it.
All right, Jim, here.
Yeah, okay, or I'll give him mine.
I'll tear out, like, taped-in amendment.
High tech.
Okay. Access to private camps.
And now that we have, now that we've hired somebody to do this, we don't expect any stuff being taped into the final version, just to let you know.
I will do virtual tape.
Okay.
Okay.
Call cutting tape.
So the next, the next thing where there were changes was in section 3.4. There was in the, the bottom of the first paragraph was anticipating that we would add a section on waivers to the bylaws.
Oh, 3.4, yeah.
Added waiver to variance. And then the statute was amended a number of years ago to, as we talked about, I think at the last meeting, to allow for certain small lots that come under common ownership to remain as separate lots under certain specific conditions, and those are those conditions. And Sid improved the wording.
So even though there's a merger in ownership, that owner of the now merged lot, two lots, can single out one and build on it, provided those criteria are met.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and they're fairly restrictive. I mean, you know, basically, they, the two lots have to basically both have, you know.
Water and sewer.
A functioning water supply and wastewater system, so they're really, you know, functioning the separate lots anyway, so. So then Sid added a note, I see, and I apologize, I didn't go over all of your notes too well, so I'll leave a little bit under non-conforming uses.
Before that, in C, I made a change in C, because I didn't think, saying at the time of transfer, each water supply and wastewater system is functioning in an acceptable manner, what's acceptable. So I thought in a manner adequately serving its intended purpose is more definitive. What is the septic system supposed to do? It's supposed to get rid of solid waste.
I think you're right. So, so then we'll probably add.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Add a little clarification also, Sid did, in section 3.5, about non-conforming uses. Where such uses existed and conform.
Tweakers.
Which I think is very good addition. Then the section in page three, 3.5.3, reconstruction after damage. You know, by adding use or location, it takes in both, you know, non-conforming uses and non-compliant structures, which I think is fine. And then Sid raises a very good question at the end. You know, how does the DRB get involved in determining, you know, a timetable for completion? And because it doesn't say.
Right.
You know, and that is, that is an issue. So, you know, one thing, one idea is, you know, the provision, and I guess this is mostly existing language, you know, may be reconstructed for such use provided the construction begins within a period of three years from the date of destruction. I mean, you could, you know, leave it at that and, you know, require a new permit application if it's not started within three years.
I like that this in no way prevents the required cleanup, I'd leave that in.
Oh, yeah, 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 no. It's a question, it's like, it's like, it's got, you've got an open-ended thing for three years.
How about saying you start within three years of the destruction, provided the work is thereafter continued in good faith to completion within no more than a year?
Right, right. So that was kind of what I was thinking, like, rather than bringing the DRB in to make a decision about.
How do you even get there?
Some, yeah, some, some, you know, arbitrary time schedule. You know, if you're giving someone three years to start, then it's, you know, say it's start within three years, and once it's started, you have, you know, if, you know, it's like if something burns down and, you know, 20 years later, somebody comes back and says, well, you know, it burned down, so I can rebuild it by right, you know? I mean, at some point, the.
There has to be a.
Not that they can't do something there, but they would have to apply for, you know, a new.
Sure.
Makes sense.
So I think, I think it was a good catch by Sid, and I think it raised the issue of, is three years.
Yeah, I can't tell you that you have to, I mean, people, some people, I, somebody had their house burned down, and they moved into their basement for the next five years. And it's a hardship maybe to complete in a year. Maybe it ought to be more than that.
Right.
But I don't think it ought to be forever.
Maybe a year with like a review?
Well, if you have that three years to.
Three years to start.
Yeah, that's a long.
And it is a long time, but how long should you then have to finish?
You'd be dealing with insurance.
Other towns.
And how do you?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes.
And everybody might define finishing in a different manner as well.
Do other towns have something we could refer to?
Sure. I think they're a lot more strict.
Yes, they are.
Maybe you finish to be able to move in.
One year, one year.
For some people, you have to call out a finish point.
Certificate of, you know.
Occupancy.
Able to move in.
A certificate of occupancy. Yeah, that's discussed in here, isn't it?
Well, we can get to the administration.
I'm just kidding. Is this something that even, even though now when you say, how do we get there? How would the DRB get there? I always think the path to the DRB is through the zoning administrator. It's become the zoning administrator's responsibility to monitor this time. Even though it's a formality, there's no permit issued. Maybe there's a special forum, the C A has to sit with them and say, okay, starting on this date, the meter's running, you have three years to finish it and get moved in, and you have to report back to me annually. Is that too much?
I'll make a motion that we, that we give three years from the date of destruction to start reconstruction, and then three years to finish. Total of six.
A second.
Yeah, that's fine. Any discussion there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Does this come up often, or?
No, just after a fire. You know, and the problem we've had is, as you read on the next one, reconstruction after damage. If people don't build on the same footprint, they think they can go out three feet further. They can't without proper permitting. And we've had battles here in town over attempted rebuilds, where, well, just make it a little bigger over there, just another 10 square feet. No, that's, you can, we'll cut your break as far as, you know, building on the same footprint. Okay, so we don't.
Sense of the meeting is three years and three years.
So reasonable timetable is deleted and.
Yeah, delete the last sentence.
The whole sentence.
But leaving the stuff about removal of debris.
Okay, and we don't want a town official to monitor that.
Well, I mean, it's really gonna be up to the zoning administrator, I think.
It will, right? It has to be up to somebody to monitor the six years. But how do we get them to the zoning administrator? If they just read that, there's nothing that says per the zoning administrator's approval, you're six years, or three years and six years.
Well, I mean, I guess we could make it more explicit. It's, you know, a matter of compliance with the zoning law, so.
And that's simple, under the supervision.
That's within the C A's purview.
Yeah. Is there state code? Or do you think?
I don't think so.
So it's under the zoning administrator's.
Well, no, the only state codes would be water, right? If that's not impacted, and that's already permitted, and sewer's already permitted, then the state wouldn't get involved.
So I think the way it's worded right now, it's a clear zoning law.
Except for you have to add in the three years to complete.
But that's a very clear statement, that's not arbitrary.
We're gonna let Jim draft that.
Okay, okay, okay. So I would say that, as we don't say in any of these other things, that the zoning administrator. So I would just leave that out.
Okay. Well, that's fine. Just want it monitored somehow.
Good, so in, towards the bottom of that page three.
Wait, I had a question about 3.5, 4, 0.4. What does it mean? Resumption of non-conforming uses shall be. If such use is abandoned for any period of time?
I'll tell you the difference. The example is, there's a gas station next to your house. It's been there for 20 years. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use, because it's in a residential zone, and you couldn't start a gas station there today.
Yeah.
The guy walks out. He goes to Texas. He intends to abandon the gas station use. The minute he walks out, he cannot restart that use.
The minute, so, yeah, because that's so vague.
It's a matter of intention. Whereas.
So any period of time is.
Discontinuance.
He just stops pumping gas.
Just stops pumping gas.
He just starts working on cars. But he doesn't pump gas anymore, he's got 12 months. So 11 months, and two weeks into it, he can start pumping gas again.
Yeah, just.
I'm gonna be up there to start that next week.
How about skipper?
Because that's always, that's always a, that's always one for the lawyers.
It's very vague.
And so you should, I don't know if it's in definitions that define, define, there is, I know. But if there's a way to define abandoned and define discontinuance.
Define any period of time, I bet. It's very vague.
If you want to come up with definitions for a definition section for discontinuance and abandonment, I'm sure we'd welcome it. I don't think we have it now.
I think that they exist, so.
They do.
Yeah, if you find some. Well, all of that.
Abandoned.
What happens, but then that's an U S P A issue that the guy has to do something about. We hope.
About a gas station.
Like, you know, say a guy has a nervous breakdown or gets sick or something.
In our definition section.
It has to be an intention.
We may want to think, rethink.
Why? Is it bad?
No, it just has a very expanded, it has a very lengthy definition of abandoned, which includes what I was just describing to me.
Oh.
Megan as intent and, and straight discontinuance. It's, they have a combined definition. So I think-
Okay.
We ought to throw that over to Jim, too.
Okay, well, that's one we were gonna-
Thought this was gonna be easy, huh? No, okay. There was no hesitation.
So, um, expansions of non-compliant structures, so again, you know, that's, that, that one, and a lot of the old zoning bylaws would really get cumbersome because it kind of threw everything to the zoning board or development review board, even when the expansion of the non-compliant structure was, the, the expanded part met all the zoning requirements. So this, this basically says, and, and, um, I think Sid reworded that again, um, within the ZA's jurisdiction, then the ZA can issue the, the permits without DRB approval for, for the expand, for the extension of the non-compliant use. But if the expansion increases the non-compliance of the structure, like further encroaches on a setback or something like that, then it could only be approved after a DRB public hearing for a variance or waiver if we decide to add that, so.
Isn't it a certainty we're gonna add waiver?
I strongly suggested it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the next section is, um, three point seven. Starts talking about the establishing zoning districts on the top of page four. So, um, you know, that's just, um, some new, I think streamlined language about establishment of zoning districts. Um, and then the, uh, the districts are enumerated in the table with their abbreviations. Um, and I, I don't, I, I don't, I think that's basically what we talked about at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's anything.
Yeah.
Um, Sid's additions in three point seven point three and three point seven point four, um, makes it a little bit clearer about what boundary we're talking about. Uh, you know, the boundary between zoning districts. Uh, whatever. And then, oh yeah, three point seven point five, um, we rewrote that. I think I, I borrowed that language from another ordinance to, um, you know, basically say it's, it's, um, up to the zoning administrator to, uh, um, determine where the proper zoning district bound, boundary line is relative to a, uh, a property that's a subject of a zoning application. And, um, that, uh, you know, people who are aggrieved by the zoning administrator's decision can appeal that to the development review board. But in, in any case, the, those are A through F are six factors that try to clarify the criteria to be used to determine, to make those determinations. I, I don't know how many of these are actually, you know.
I don't think we have any long topographic contour lines, but.
A lot of vagaries out there. Um, yeah, we-
But I think we ought to leave it.
I thi, I think it's, it's probably okay the way it is, and I'm hoping we don't have too many problems. I know, Ellie, every time we redo zoning maps, we try to reconcile, uh, differences and, you know, make it clear where the, that the lines follow property boundaries or, or very clear setbacks for roads and things like that, so. Uh, hopefully, the, I think, I think the GIS technology has improved our, our zoning district boundary dispute case a lot. It used to be, um, like when I started doing this work, um, everything was written descriptions of zones, and, you know, they, they were very often from the large boulder behind Fred's house to the third pine tree behind Mary's house.
To where the old cow does.
Yeah, so, so.
And sometimes agreed upon and sometimes not, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
I thought this was quite comprehensive and interesting as well done, you know?
Absolutely. Good.
Okay, on, um, I guess we're on to page six. Um, so, um, oh, I see the top, um, Sid thought of one of the things that's in the, uh, the conditional use criteria standards, um, noise. Noise can be an issue with a conditional use, so that was added. I think that's probably a good addition.
Right there.
It's on the top of page six, I guess we, uh, and then, um, permitted, permitted uses. I, I think we just kind of rewrote that a little bit to try to make it as clear as possible.
Right.
You know, basically, single-family, two-family dwelling units and accessory uses to those are acted upon directly by the zoning administrator, while other permitted uses are subject to site plan review. Um, as, as, as spelled out in section four point two point three, which I hope is still section four point two point three.
We should probably put a question mark, I'm sure, yeah.
Check that, yeah, 'cause they have been renumbering things. Um, and then, um, then going down a little bit. So after much discussion at the last meeting, or some discussion anyway, we decided to, um, pull out the TDR, the transfer development rates provision as-
Much to Megan's chagrin.
It's, uh, never been used.
I struggle to understand them.
And then which, yeah, which could cause problems down the road. Oh, and also, I, I, and the land use matrix in three point nine. Again, my, my hope is that we can sim, greatly simplify the uses, and so not make the land use matrix such a big part of the bylaw and put it in the appendix. So we'll just list the allowed uses in each district, in the district. That, that table is, um-
Cumbersome at best.
Overwhelming.
It's fraught with difficulty.
Yeah, so. Um, and then, and then, uh, three point 10 was, um, now, now we're getting really cutting edge because that was the section on, uh, previously cluster subdivision. And, uh, that, that exists in statute Vermont State Planning Law now only in the context of planned unit development.
Right.
So, so we renamed that section PUD, but then, um, changed the, the language to be more consistent with a true planned unit development. So you could certainly still do a cluster subdivision in a residential district using the PUD, but you could also do potentially other things. You know, you could do a condominium development. Or you could do, in a, in a, uh, in a district that allows commercial uses, you could do a mixed-use residential and commercial development, varying the standards according to the, according to the, uh, the, the goals and, and objectives of the, uh, the PUD section. Um, and I see Sid added a section, probably based on experience, um, about, uh, um, uh, easements and restrictions and, and some type of, uh, creating some type of, uh, homeowners association, um, which, uh, makes sense when you've, uh-
You have the bottom of page eight.
When you've got, you know, potentially multiple owners in a, in a single, uh-
There are lots of places right now in Powell where there are private roads and no homeowners association charged with the responsibility of maintaining the road and collecting dues. So maybe they get it plowed, maybe they don't.
So I, I think, you know, again, a goo, a good addition, and I'm surprised that wasn't in the PR, PUD section that I slightly criticized.
That you stole.
Um.
No, it is a good addition.
Yeah.
If you're at the end, you're gonna get plowed.
Um, so then three eleven just tries to clarify the situation about when you've got more than one principal residential building on a parcel. Um, you know, how, how that has to be situated, um, relative to other buildings on the parcel. Not a big change really, just a wording change. Then three point one five was from the old statute again. It had a list of so-called limitations and things that had to be allowed. And I don't, the, the way that, the way that most of us read the statute now is you, you have to allow those things to happen somewhere in your town, but the way it was written previously, you kind of inferred that you, they had to, you had to allow them anywhere. And, um, and so, um, we've been preferentially just putting them in the districts where you think they're most appropriate, so.
Oh, okay.
You know, like solid waste facilities and things like that, you know? So, um, we'll, we'll add those to the, to the district uses in section five for next time, and we can, uh, we can talk about that.
Instead of a separate paragraph, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's, it, you know, it's unfortunate, it's the kind of thing that, you know, can sometimes get overlooked because if you have a group of uses in a special section, but they're not necessarily mentioned in the, in the actual zoning district, then sometimes you, you don't make that connection. So we'll just put them right in the district, I think it turns out. Um, and then referral to, uh, state departments.
I don't know if this is what's intended by section forty-four twenty-four. I don't know whether it is the zoning administrator or somebody else. Who is the administrative officer there?
Yeah, I think it's, it's supposed to be the zoning administrator.
Okay.
It, it, it probably is written that way because, uh, you know, flood hazard bylaw doesn't have to be part of the zoning. Um, you know, if a town doesn't have zoning, so, I mean, that's probably why it's written that way. In, in this case, it would certainly be the zoning administrator.
Yeah.
So thanks for that. Um, and then, um, oh, so we had a lot of discussion about, you know, the, the new statutory, um, restrictions on whether and how towns can regulate wind energy facilities and telecommunications towers because they both have exemptions under section two forty-eight. Um, but they have it under, under the Planning and Development Act because they are subject to section two forty-eight or two forty-eight A, Public Utility Commission review. But it was, it was, it was pointed out quite correctly by some folks at the meeting last time that, you know, like an off-grid wind energy facility, um, you know, wouldn't necessarily be subject to, um, PUC review, and so you could still regulate that. So Sid, okay, let's keep that in here then. And while we're, while we're at it, let's, you know, um, point to the, to the fact that the town of Powell can participate in those two forty-eight proceedings, esp- especially using their, their town plan policies. Um, similarly, um, you know, for telecom, telecommunications towers and antennas, it's, you, you can't require, this is kind of, the, the statute reads strangely on this. I don't know if you've read the statute on this one Sid, but it's kind of weird. So you can't, you can't require a zoning permit for a, a telecom tower that's subject to a PUC, um, uh, approval. But it says that the PUC is supposed to consider local plans and bylaws. And so it's like, well, it's kind of weird that you can't regulate it with your bylaw, but the PUC can look at your bylaws. So like, okay, let's-
Throw it in.
Let's throw it in there and say, so if the PUC is looking at it, here's what our bylaw says about these facilities.
Yeah.
So I added that. That was a good, good catch at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, I agree. I'm glad, I'm glad you did that.
Um, and that was, um, that was one through three from the last meeting. And, um, feel free to digest that further at home. Come back with other suggestions.
Yeah.
And I have the taped-in section to add to that. Um, now, I, I reviewed, um, section four, um.
Excuse me.
And I, 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 um-
Nope, sure.
I, I corrected a couple of my own typos when I sent it out, I wanted to get that. But I think the ones you have probably still have my typos, so I apologize for that. Um, so, um, yeah, so the four-one-one, it, the, um, it kind of, it starts out with a discussion of the zoning administrator, and it, it persists in calling the zoning administrator the zoning administrative officer, which is fine, but I just kind of shortened it to zoning administrator because that's what everybody calls. In the statute, it's the administrative officer, but in the, all through the bylaws, referred to as the ZA. So I was like, well, let's just call it the zoning administrator. And then I just kind of, I tried to pick up spots where, you know, you used a personal pronoun like he or she or he slash she.
And the handbook is just the zoning administrator.
Yeah, I, 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 in the statute, it says administrative officer.
You could divulge to hereafter called the zoning administrator, too.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't know.
Whatever you want. You're okay with the rest of that paragraph?
Yeah.
Because what I want to know, I had to look at this six years ago, um, when we had a, a small town battle in the, the PC appointing. I'm not sure we actually appoint, uh, although there is, there is a state statute that talks about it. I think that we recommend and that the plant, and that the select board appoints.
So I think, I think that, um, I have to check this myself.
I hope it's this way.
I, I think, I think that you, uh, you appoint and the select board approves.
Okay.
Well, section, reading from the zoning administrator's handbook, it says, "The planning commission has the responsibility of nominating candidates for ZA to the legislative body. For example, select board, city council, village trustees. The legislative body has the authority to appoint a ZA to a three-year term", citing section four 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 eight, parentheses, A, close parentheses.
So, so the intent we learned last time, or six years ago, was that they couldn't override our decision with somebody that they wanted. So in other words, we're going to recommend, if they don't like our recommendation, they can tell us to go back to the drawing board, but they can't say, no, we don't like the guy you sent up, we're putting John in. That, that's the thing, that it stops.
I think that's the intent, and it, it probably works either way, but if that's what the statute says, then probably-
This is paraphrasing the statute.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll double-check the statute just to make sure that I have the right language.
Section four 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 eight A.
Because we were about, we were at that crossroads where we're gonna have to rely on the old section here. We're at that stage. Okay.
So we're back to, uh, approval, okay.
Um, so, you know, it is interesting in the, in the section on the, uh, development review board function, um, the, the new guidance that we've all been given for, um, decisions of the development review board indicates that you, you don't have to report how each individual member votes. Uh, you know, and, you know, those decisions, uh, uh, you know, can be made in, in deliberative session, basically, and then reported out in open session. So unless you want to keep that in there, um, and.
So you would just say five voted for and four voted?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Hi.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Get, get you off of social media.
I was just saying.
Well, I think, you know, when they added the provisions on, on, uh-
Get people from burning houses down.
Yeah.
Right?
You know, 'cause, 'cause executive session is, is reserved for certain very specific things in state law. So they created this deliberative session for quasi-judicial boards like the DRB
Right.
to, you know, to deliberate decisions like that. To, you know, to deliberate decisions like that in closed session and, and, and come to a decision. And at least that's, that's all the guidance that we've gotten. I, I was scouring around looking for the statutory language and spell that out. All I kept finding was all the training modules we got from the state that say that, so I'm assuming that's correct, so.
Okay.
Um, that's what I've been telling everybody for the last five or six years.
Now you just hope you're right.
So you just want to take out the word showing the vote of each member on each question? Because you do have to keep minutes, okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you want to add two additional functions, which I think is a good idea.
Well, yeah, the, the, um, the waiver as we've been talking about, and then, uh, this question of, uh, PUDs, so.
Good.
Are there ever times when there has to be a roll call vote? Or you can have a roll call vote, you just don't have to show it and reflect it in the minutes?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you, you can, you can, I mean, you don't have to go into deliberative session either. I mean, I think it's generally a really good idea to do that.
Because you have to show that you have met the majority requirements, I think you should identify how people voted. Because then, how do you know whether it's four to three or seven, seven to one?
Well, I think you, you do have to report the vote.
The number has to be recorded.
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, but you can, I mean, you can vote in open session if you want to. I dare say in my experience working with a lot of DRBs around the, the region, most of them do, um, frequently.
Vote in open session.
Yeah, they, they close the hearing and they vote.
Yeah.
And this just removes the requirement, doesn't mean we still can't do it, right? So I'm fine with it.
Um, okay. Um, section four point one point three, that's a, again, there's a statutory change.
Yeah, eight years, thank God.
The town plan is up every eight years now. You should, you would not believe all the town plans I'm like, I'm making little notes, don't worry about after I retire, so.
Yeah.
Is that what you find?
I think I got some of that here. That's good stuff. This will be somebody else's problem.
Someone else's problem, that's right, so, all right.
Um, let me ask you this though. I think the process of review begins in five years. You don't have to have it finished.
Well, yeah, you're supposed to do, you're supposed to do.
Every five years to take a look.
You're supposed to do a, like, a mid, a midterm review.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, and the regional commission's supposed to be involved at some level too, and, and it's.
With that review.
With a review. And the purpose of that review is really to check in to see if you're, you know, ma- moving forward on implementing the plan. So if you've got a recommendation to do a special study, have you started the special study?
Or statutes in the state level has changed or the regional level that we're so far to whack with that we might need to do some.
Right, right.
Amending now.
And there's nothing to say that you can't do an amendment to a plan in between too, so, yeah.
We've already done one.
But your plan is still, is good now for eight years. It doesn't expire for eight years, so, um.
Wow, I will lie to you.
Okay. Four.
Still in your prime.
Four point two point one, um, let's see, how, oh. Can't lose my, my notes here. Um, yeah, I didn't, I, I corrected, um, some words and some statutory references because in a couple of rounds of revisions to the statute, they changed the, the references. So things like forty-four, sixty-four changed to forty-four, sixty-five and so on. Um, and then four point two point one point four, um, oh. Now, now I probably start, now I probably start getting things really confused, but. Um, required application materials for permitted uses. Um, so.
So here's the original.
So in the, in the bylaw, I have that's on pages, page eighteen. And, um, I, um, there's a, there's a thing in there in E, you know, about information required for specific reviews under which the application will be, um, reviewed, may be requested by the DRB.
First of all, it's lousy English.
Awesome.
Yeah. So, so I'm, I'm, um, talking about maybe just information required for the specific review under which the application will be considered, for example, site plan review. And I think it just makes it clear and then you say, okay, I need to go look and see what I need to submit for site plan review. End of story.
I agree.
That's cool.
So, okay. Um.
I'd say you could put that in a draft.
Okay, all right. Um, four point two point two, conditional uses. Ah, all right. I butchered this one up pretty good for you guys. So, um, yeah. Um, so I, I, I kind of, um, it's, let's, to make it clear. So four point two point two point two, the bottom of page eighteen, applicability. I, I kind of took that out. Well, I did suggest taking that out altogether because it didn't really seem to add very much. And I thought we could pick up what needed to be covered in, uh.
So A through E, you're talking about the?
Well, no, under, under, under that, there's a, a paragraph, four point two point two point.
Applicability, yeah, yeah.
Applicability. So I, 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 I basically, um, shortened up section four point two point two point one, basically just leaving the first sentence for a purpose. So a conditional use permit allows for review of certain land uses or types of development to ensure that they are appropriate where they are proposed and compatible with adjacent uses.
Yeah.
See, the, the rest of it, that paragraph kind of goes beyond purpose.
Sure, right.
So, so I turned that into four point two point two point two.
Yeah.
And called it procedure and criteria for review.
Yeah.
Um, and it just kind of lays out that the DRB, um, acts on them following a public hearing. Um, they include conditions, um, to mitigate impacts. They may deny permits if impacts can't be mitigated based on findings relative to. And A, B, C, D, um, there, which are, um, well, my A, B, C, D on that, on my review notes are from the statute. And they're, they are, um, in my mind, um, they're in the statute, so they're, they're there. And you have to consider, but they're wonderfully vague and, and they keep a lot of, um.
So you think adding any other bylaw ordinance or regulation is not necessary?
I, you know, I don't really think it's, I don't really think it adds much to it, um.
I agree.
But, but what I think does have, you've got this section in your bylaw on performance standards.
Yeah.
And I like those. Uh, I, I mean, I want to tweak some of them, um, when we get to them.
Okay.
But to me, it's like, the performance standards in a lot of ways provide clarity and definition to the really general conditional use standards in the statute. So I just suggested that you include those performance standards in the conditional use review. I mean, those, those deal with, you know, things like, you know, like noise and dust and, and stormwater runoff and things like that. And those are things that, you know, uh, you know, really have an effect on the area. So I s- we can, we can, like I said, when we get to the performance standards, we can tweak those a little bit. But I thought that was a cleaner way to do it, to have a short purpose and then have this, uh, procedure and criteria for review and pull in the, the performance standards.
I agree, you should delete the present four point two point two point two.
Yeah, I read that about six times and couldn't quite figure out where we were going with that.
Conf-. And under, under, uh, administration and enforcement, I'm glad that you added close of the final public hearing.
Oh, right, yeah.
Because if that's left open-ended through continuances, et cetera, one may construe that forty-five days has come and gone.
Yeah, so that's, again, that's consistent with the statute. You just have to be sure that you keep the hearing open, you know, um, so it's not understood by somebody that it's been closed.
Got it.
Until it is actually closed. And the other, the other, um, change in the, the wording there, the, the way it starts out now, it says, "An applicant shall submit a request for review of a conditional use permit fifteen days prior to a given DRB meeting. For the request to appear on the meeting agenda, the DRB chairman may decide, based on the complexity of the request, that additional review time is required and blah blah." And I was like, well, let's, let's just, the, the applicant should be meeting with the zoning administrator. And it's, it's the zoning administrator's job to make a determination that a conditional use hearing is required and to refer it to the, to the DRB. And then, you know, the, the DRB, hopefully the zoning administrator, um, does a good job and makes sure that a real complete application is submitted, but if there's.
In a timely fashion.
Yeah, but if there's, so hopefully, you know, because other, then maybe the whole process can be done in one meeting. But if, if, you know, other stuff comes up or it's not a complete application, then at that point, the, the DRB can decide to recess the hearing. Yeah.
What is the time period within which the DRB has to act on a conditional use permit from the date it's filed?
See, there is.
Without it being deemed approved?
There, there's, there isn't one. It's, it's after the hearings, it's after the hearings close, so.
So file an application a day, the DRB can dawdle with it and continue and continue and continue for a year?
That's, that's, that is, that is a, a, a problem, but it's always been that way for conditional uses. It, it used to be for, um, permitted uses that were just required site plan review, that those had a sixty-day timeline from the time that the application was received.
Makes sense.
But they changed that, so they kind of merged all those review processes into one. The statute now refers to appropriate municipal panels. So they, the, the proceedings in either case are the same. And they're forty-five days after the close of the hearing. But you're right, and, and I mean, you know, if, you know, you could get into all sorts of shenanigans with that.
To keep it going.
Well, yeah, you could, you know, two members of the board might decide to not show up to make sure there wasn't a forum and they had to recess, I mean, you know, I mean, and stuff like that can happen and you certainly hope that.
If there's a time pressure, if somebody needs a permit to do a particular thing within a particular time period, you could dawdle them beyond this time period.
Yeah, you can, and I mean, I, you know, I have, fortunately, I've, I've heard of that happening, but I haven't really seen it happen. I mean, I'm, the board's really, I think, by and large, you know, they.
Trying to accommodate the.
They want to make, they want to, you know, act as promptly and responsibly as possible. But it's something that could happen.
So you haven't seen any other time limits imposed, like a one-year total time limit or anything like that? Close of the final hearing should be fine.
I don't know if you can. I mean, it's, it's pretty well, the process is pretty well defined in the statute.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I'm glad to see close of the final public hearing inserted, so.
Um, let's see. Um, here, please. Okay, oh, yeah, okay, great. Now, now, submittal requirements, right. So I, I kind of tried to, um, I, I do this a fair bit because I think basically, you know, you need, in A, it's, the current thing says, submittal requirements, application form with site, with plot plan, including the additional written material. But I was like, well, how do I like a, a plot plan? We, we know what a site plan is, so I said, well, let's use site plan. And then, and then let's, let's, you know, include, um, uh, you know, written language, um, and, um, uh, oh, oh, I'm sorry. In A, where I said site plan, I did site plan including, and then I listed what the site requirements are for a site plan. And then, um, I left, I left that and I said, I said, B, additional written material may be requested as follows. And I kept the statement of interest in the property. Um, I, I didn't, I, I had never run into language about, um, you know, this authorized to condemn the property. I mean, you can keep that all in there if you want to, but that was, I've never seen that before. Um, so statement of interest in the property, um, legal description of the acreage, and then a description of the proposed use, including, um, building square footage, types of activities.
That condemned the property is clearly a misstatement. It should be.
Where is that?
That the owner authorized. It's, it's under V one.
Yeah, V one.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it seemed like, if, if you left it, said that you.
It was pulled in from somewhere else.
The owner is authorizing the application. That seems to be the important thing, so, yeah.
Do you want to say, Jim, at the end of four point two point four, and all the letter and numerals under B, that the DRB can upon request waive one or more of these requirements for good cause shown?
Oh, that's a good, yeah, that's a good, actually, that's a really good idea. Um, I'll, I'll put that in there. And, um.
Upon written request, DRB may waive one or more of the above requirements upon cause, good cause shown, or something like that.
There is good cause.
What's that?
She said, what's good cause? I said, that's what the DRB can determine.
That's what the DRB does.
That's right.
Monetary hardship. Don't ask me for a fancy surveyor's plan.
Yeah, and, you know, so, sometimes, yeah, sometimes some of the things to get a little bit, like, a lot of times if it's a really, really large property and the, the, um, the activity or the proposed activity is like just in a little corner of it, you know, it might be overkill to, you know, require.
We've had, we've had that already. Somebody has eighty acres of property and wants to sell five acres over here. And the surveyor says, and the ZA said, you got to have a survey of the eighty acres to carve out the five acres.
Right.
That's a lot, yeah.
We didn't, fortunately, we didn't get there.
Right, not yet, they'll come back.
And they never came back.
It's almost, you know, where, you know, you know, you really need to show, you know, um, streams and, and adjacent buildings that are half mile away.
And it doesn't have to be a two-foot contour.
So, yeah, so things like that.
You have to show ledge protrusions on the ground.
Okay, uh, excellent suggestion. I will add that. Cause, um, okay. Um, you know, so, so, um, so basically, what, what the submittal requirements are basically allow a site plan, statement of interest in the property, legal description, and then some, um, general description of basically describing what the proposed use is going to be. And, and that's, that's it. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's an open question, I guess, when we get into the uses, like, how many things are going to be, um, you know, subject to, uh, conditional use versus, uh, you know, permitted site, use with site plan review. Um, the, you know, again, on the original one, you'll see C, additional graphic material that may be requested drawn to scale. Those are things that are just like in site plans, so I took out C and I incorporated those things into the site plan requirements of A.
Okay.
So that's why that's there as it is. Um, okay, site, site plan approval. Um, so in four point two point three point one. Purp- purpose. Um, so, yeah, this is a, a subjective call on my part, and so you can talk about it. But I thought that the last clause in that, um, that starts the next to last line in that section and prevents the development from resulting in significant negative impacts in the town, its rural character, and its residential communities. I thought that was, um, not too appropriate for a permitted use for a site plan review because that kind of gets into, um, you know, more of the conditional use realm, I, I thought. So, you know, to. So, you know, to me-
Clearly.
If it's a permitted use, and we'll be pretty clear on what the standards are for approval. But if it, you know, if it's a permitted use, if it meets all the dimensional requirements, if it's a, you know, quote unquote, a good site plan that has, you know, reasonable landscaping and vehicular access and safe pedestrian movement. You know, I don't know if we really want the DRB to get into questions about-
Highest quality design.
Rural, rural character.
He left in highest quality.
I, I left, yeah.
Oh, after, yeah.
Because that was a big thing with you guys, I know, you want good design.
Oh, sure.
But, but, you know, starting to make, you know,
And do we want to pay for it?
Decisions about rural character and things like that and a permitted use. I'm like, ah. I mean, like I said, that was a subjective call on my part.
In Vermont, can you deny a site plan review request?
As near as I can tell you, you can, yeah. But, but it's a good point, Sid, in that generally-
You send it back and say, show us more.
Yeah, generally you don't, because you're saying, you know, your, your bylaws basically saying, this is the kind of thing we want to have happen here. And if somebody comes, comes in and says, okay, I want to do this here, it's really just a matter of making sure it's a good site plan, as opposed to making these-
Subjective judgments.
So that's why-
You can't deny it.
Oh, really? Yeah. I mean, I, I think in, in Vermont, you could, I mean, if, if, you know, to me, it's like, if the developer comes in, say, and the property owner wants to do a store and wants to, his site plan shows the, the access drive, like, right on an intersection, a blind intersection, and you say, no, we can't approve that because that's unsafe. Then, yeah, you want him to move it, but if he says, no, I want it right there, then you deny it.
Okay.
Yep.
Good example.
Hopefully that doesn't happen, but, yeah. All right. Uh, let's see, and I corrected a reference in 4.3, 4.2.3.2. And then, um, site plan review criteria, 4.2.3.3. I added a few, a few things. Is that, the, the original things that were in there, um, A, B, C, and D, were the things that used to be in the statute, and the statute was limited to those things. But they expanded it, um, made it much more open-ended.
I would take D out.
Um, yeah, that's a little weird. Um, so, I have no problem with taking D out if you want that out.
But your suggestions, E from J, are good.
Yeah, and, and J is the one that, that might be a little bit, um,
Subjective.
Subjective and controversial, but what I want to do on that one, it, that's one that says building, sighting, and design.
Yeah.
But when you're talking about, you know, commercial development in the town potentially, that's really, really important, um, to the, to the, you know, how the town looks and functions. So without, it has potential for being too subjective, but I think if we use the performance standards and we change the per, the wording and the performance standards to have some really clear criteria, like, you know, like minimum, minimum, um, or maximum, set, minimum or maximum setbacks, so that the location of the building is, is, um, defined well, and talk about the location of the parking and things like that.
How about, yeah, putting parking behind the buildings?
Parking behind or to the screen or to the side. Things like that, I think are, you know, can, can, they run the risk of being a little bit subjective, but I think if we get into the performance standards and define just what we mean by good building, sighting, and design, then I think it's a good addition to the site plan criteria. So.
Good.
Um, hold on. Uh, and you, oh, yeah, and you see in 4.2.3.5, site plan review procedure, that, um, I, um, I, um, changed that a little bit to reflect that forty-five day timeline as, um, as we were talking about in the question that Sid raised, that what used to be that the language in there was true. Um, that copies of the decision shall be certified now to the opponent within sixty days. And it was, you know, sixty days-
That's procedural, so we don't need that in here, do we?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's statute, but I mean, I, I think that the, the rule now is it's forty-five days from the close of the hearing, so just make it straight. Yeah. I think, let's see, oh, in, um, I think, 4.2, what is the procedure? Oh, and, oh, I'm sorry, 4.2.3.4, I skipped over a little bit. Required application materials. Um, basically, all I did was I added some things in that are pretty standard things to have in site plans and that you really need to have in now. I mean, water supply and wastewater disposal wasn't in there, and that's kind of fundamental. And, um, erosion control and stormwater management plans, that's, that's, um, gotten to be really, really important this day, this day and age. And, um, exterior lighting and signs are, are usually pretty standard things to include in site plans, so, um, include that. And then D, again, I referenced the building and site design details from the performance standards, the section 8.8, which I think, you know, we'll, we'll need to tweak a little bit. So that's a lot.
Correct.
That's a lot. I, I don't think, it doesn't really change the world a lot, but I, 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 I really wanted to write something that, that took a lot of the guesswork out of site plan review for permitted uses.
Yeah.
So Sid, these are what, this is what you have to submit, you know, and if you submit this, then you'll get your permit.
Right.
So it might, it might read a little bit longer, but I think it's a little bit clearer. But anyway, that's something you guys can digest. Um, let's see. Um, so in 4.2.4.1, which runs over to the next page, that's appeal, appeal procedures. There's just some corrected references to the statute.
Oh, okay, you're just updating that, yeah.
And then my, my last thing was, um, so was, um, 4.2.5. It would be brand new, and that would be, I usually would stick in the section on waivers after the variance thing.
Right.
Um, and I think as, we might have talked at one of the first meetings that, um, you know, the variance criteria are so strict that it's, you know, almost impossible to give a legal variance from the heart. But there's a lot of smaller additions that are entirely reasonable, um, that I have some mechanism for forgetting. So recognizing that they, they amended the state law a few years ago to create this provision for, for waivers that lets the Development Review Board basically waive certain dimensional requirements.
Minor additions.
As long as the, as long as, yeah, it's a minor addition and as long as the, you know, like the, there's some clear criteria for, you know, that puts some limit, limit on it. And I just grabbed this one from, I don't know, who did I grab this from?
Chasberry.
Chasberry. Because we just did, I did a zoning rewrite with them a couple of years ago, and this is what they came up with. Um, yeah, I thought theirs was, was fairly restrictive. Um, you know, it does not increase the footprint of the structure by more than five percent, um, by, by, or by no more than two hundred. So, that's pretty small. So, so, but, um, so, you know, you think about like the type of thing that you might be talking about. So in, in some of these things, it might be simple, like, it might be like, like, uh, you know, stairway off your front porch. You know, you might want to have a, or a handicap ramp or something like that.
Yeah.
And the front porch might already be in the setback, so-
Massachusetts, you can build your handicap ramp even if it goes into your required front yard, you can't stop it.
Yeah, well, and, and, you know, that's,
Should be the same.
That's the example here, it's given in the statute of something a waiver could be used for. Um, but, but, you know, I, I'm like, you know, well, let's say you want to put a front porch on, period. You know, and, you know, the variance criteria would make that almost impossible. But a waiver, you know, you say, oh, I want to put on, you know, an eight by twenty foot front porch. That's a reasonable thing, you can do that. Or, let's say you're, you're reconfiguring the inside of your house and you want to, like, bump out a wall to, like, have a, a bathroom with a master bedroom or something like that. And it's going to, you know, encroach a few feet into the side of your setback. I mean, again, it's, you know, it's an addition that isn't huge. It doesn't really change the way the house looks or functions. And so it might be a good candidate for a waiver. It's just a question of what size line do you want to put on?
This would appear to limit waivers to setback requirements only?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, maybe it's written that way. It, I think it could be, um, like, building coverage, too.
We, we do have lot coverage requirements.
Yeah. I mean, it probably, you could probably use it for that, too.
How about saying dimensional?
Okay, yeah. I think that's fair.
Yeah, and we are going to keep the prohibition against granting use variances, I assume?
I, yeah, I think that you can't do that, period.
Can't grant use variances?
I don't think you can.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, you-
That would be a gas station next to your house.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, the, the thing with the, the so-called use variances is that, that's really, um, that, that really crosses the line between, uh, you know,
That's a rezoning.
Judicial function and a legislative function.
Yeah.
And so it's not really the DRB's role to make a legislative decision like that, so.
Good.
So waivers of dimensional requirements.
Well, I'm going to give you some, I'm going to ticker with this.
Good. I'm making a note, Sid. Circle around it.
So not setback, but rather dimensional?
Well, that's my first thought.
Yeah, I mean, you, you might, I don't, I don't really recall what all the lot coverage requirements are, but you might have, you know, you might have a ten percent lot coverage requirement somewhere, you know. You might meet all the setback requirements, but go to eleven or twelve percent and it would not really matter very much, but probably.
And you talk about design requirements at the end there.
We have lot coverage, minimum, maximum lot coverages of ten percent, sixty-five percent, fifty, and we have pretty generous.
Yeah, they are.
We don't have floor office, uh, floor area ratios, so that's good.
No, you know, it's, it's interesting that, you know, that's such a big thing in zoning. And I, no, no town in Bennington County has-
Floor area ratio. There are more fights over that in Boston, Cambridge, New York.
You get some interest in looking for-
Oh, you sure do, yeah. Jim, this is terrific.
Yeah.
Um, so, I'll, um, we can, you guys have an open discussion about this now if you want to, but I'll, I'll take this and, within a few notes that I've got, and add to the draft, section four. And then I'll try to get you at least a week in advance of the next meeting, um, notes on section five. It, now, section five, again, that's, that starts to get into like all the individual districts, so that might be a, a two-part. I'll see when I get into it, how complicated it looks.
I think, uh, we've got Fred here, we've made him wade through the whole thing, so I think we should not have further discussion.
Yeah, if you want to start putting together a draft, I think that's worth it.
I wouldn't do that, so.
Pretty comprehensive.
So our, our next meeting is Tuesday, the twentieth of August. Just so that everybody knows and that you have it as well, you may on the agenda for that. So that gives you-
A month.
Three, three weeks to get the, everything, everything to get sent out. Shouldn't be a problem.
Fantastic. Thanks for your work.
Great stuff.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
Everybody okay? Anybody need a, uh, quick break, uh, before we get Fred on the hot seat over there, as we call it? If not, Fred, come on up. Let me just find my little questionnaire here.
We, we purposely made you sit there so that you'd be relieved and fall asleep when you got there.
So Fred, just a, just an update. Um, last Tuesday, we interviewed, uh, three candidates, three other candidates, and we tried to keep the, um, questioning fairly uniform. Um, but certainly gave everybody a chance to tell their story, that's for sure. We wanted to keep our questions roughly the same. So, um, is everybody ready, by the way? Are we okay?
Yep.
So the, the first question, and, and we tried to cover, we gave everybody twenty minutes. Nobody really took twenty minutes, but you're, you're welcome to go the full twenty if you want, okay? So tell us why you're interested in this position.
Well, as you know, I've been involved, uh, in, in working with you guys, sometimes debating with you guys, uh, for a couple of years now. I've been involved in paying attention to, to things, things going on within our town. There's a lot of changes coming. And prior to that, I, I was just enjoying life and, you know-
Oh, dear. You don't anymore?
But, yeah, well, I, I do, and I'm, I'm getting back to that, but I'm, I'm adjusting my approach to, to, to dealing with things in the town. I, I tend to want to be a part of a team. And I want, I really care for this town, and I think a lot of, mostly what I care about is the, um, the environment. The environment of the town. I, I do care some for, for old culture in the, in the town. But not as much as I do with, just about the, the rural character of the town, preserving it. And, you know, being aware that growth and change is going to happen. The easiest way for me to deal with it is to, to be actively involved. So, I've thought about it a lot, and the requirements of the job are something that I can do. Uh, I know my way around town. I've been here my whole life, I grew up here. So, you know, basically, you know, I'm interested in pitching in and doing, doing my part to, to help, you know, you guys, with your, with your job. I appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you. Good.
You know, when I, when I first met, when you, I didn't know what you guys were doing, what you were about. And it's taken me, you know, a couple of years working. You know, I was part of the Development Review Board for a while, and, or the Planning Commission for a while.
Yep.
So, you know, I've, I've gradually adjusted my, my approach to dealing with things here in town. But there's, there's no way of getting, getting myself not active. There's no way of getting back, back to just-
Yeah.
Back to slot full.
Listening to birds and just like, everything's fine.
Once you tune in, it's hard to tune out.
Yeah, so, um, being, being that I'm retired, I don't know if it's, um, officially semi-retired, because I do work, I do work twenty hours a day.
Yeah, that's what everyone does.
That was after a couple of weeks of retirement, and you want, just about going out of my mind. I needed something to do.
So it only took you a couple of weeks to figure that out.
I have the flexibility of scheduling, and, um, I'm used to working a lot. So, I, you know, I, I could see myself being very active in this role.
Yep. Good. So we just finished a town plan, which is a vision plan, as you know. Um, you actually were instrumental in some of that. Um, what is your own vision for panel?
My, I like to, I like to see an economy back here in town. You know, I've, I've, I've seen it transform from a vibrant town with multiple, uh, a few large employers to basically very few large employers, very few even moderate-sized employers, and it's more of a suburban community.
Yeah.
I've never been really happy with it becoming- I've never been really happy with it becoming a bedroom community.
You'd like to see more commerce, more business.
Yeah, and there, there are elements of the bedroom community I do like.
Right.
I like peace and quiet.
Yep.
You know, I like, uh, the security. I live up on the mountain and it's pretty secure, you know, where, you know, if, if, I think if there was a whole bunch of activity going on, things would get a lot, a lot noisier.
Yeah, so economic development is important.
Economic development is definitely, um, something I'd like to see happen here. I know, um, there's a lot of hurdles. There's hurdles within the state of Vermont itself. So, so, you know, what, what you as a planning commission and a select board decide to do, um, is somewhat irrelevant, because, you know, to what, what the desires of the state are.
In some cases, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. So your role as zoning administrator, what, what does that bring to your vision? Could you be more specific as to what, what your role would be in helping create economic development here?
Helping create economic development. Um, specifically with that? I would just be, I would just be, you know, um, on the ground floor of, you know, any, any new ideas that come in, anybody that wants to come in and propose, propose something, I would be able to, um, you know, kind of, you know, compare that to what, what my laws are and, uh-
Sure.
You know, maybe advise them a little bit on, you know, what criteria they're going to need to meet, you know, what possible pushback they might have and-
Yeah, you're the first line, right?
Yeah, I would be, you know, apt to encourage people to, you know, to, to bring businesses and business ideas to the town. So I'd, I'd definitely want to hear and be an active listener to what their idea was. You know, and also, you know, I like, you know, I would expand that into, you know, people's, um, housing needs as well, you know, what they want. You know, the one thing in the culture I, I miss or I don't want to see go away is the American dream, where, you know, people dream about having, finally, finally securing that their, their special little acre and being able to do something with it.
Yeah.
I would be apt to, uh, advocate for them and do what I can to help, help them get through, um, some obstacles that they, they might not foresee.
Sure. Good. Yeah, that's a vital role of the ZA to do that. Fred, have you, um, have you looked at the zoning administrators handbook or, uh, the Vermont Planning and Development Act?
I have, yeah.
Uh, our town plan, I know you've read at least big sections of that.
Nothing is committed to memory, like, I don't have a photographic memory, because I've been driving myself through-
Oh, that's the squab.
That's it.
All the rest of them, man.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody else came in and recited it, Fred. I just, I, I'm front now.
Yeah, I am familiar with that law. I think the zoning administrators handbook is invaluable.
Oh, sure.
It's a guide, it's a guide. There's, there's a lot of moving parts, um, and, you know, as you guys discussed tonight, things are going to change.
Yep.
You know, I looked at, you know, in the, in the, uh, the current zoning regulations here in town.
That was my next question. Have you read the bylaws and the subdivision regs?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, good.
And, you know, the grid, the grid that you have, um, allowable uses and now, yeah, the matrix. I could, I could find value in that, but that may be going away, so.
No, I think-
Well, going away, going into different sections and maybe a little bit different wording.
It's gonna be better defined.
I think it's better defined because just, it's cumbersome to, you know, I'm just getting to know my way around that. It's been twelve years.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Well, that's, that's where I, you know, I, I, I would definitely keep that and, and the, um, the handbook. Definitely as a reference guide.
Okay. What, um, as, as you understand it, uh, what is the ZA's function in administering PONL zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations? Kind of the job description, so to speak.
Well, basically, you know, I would, I would be taking the, I would be like the first point of contact for somebody that wants to submit a plan. And I would start the process. I would do the research on, on, on the site, you know, research the history of that site, uh, see, see where it falls with the-
Yep.
What is the, uh, what the bylaws, what, you know, what, what zone is in, et cetera. Basically, doing, making all, making sure all the check marks are checked and all the questions are asked.
Good.
And, you know, and bringing, you know, bringing, bringing the person along in, in the process. I don't, I don't see myself as an adversarial, you know, adversarial role to, to either you or, or to the, to the person who's doing the goal.
Yeah. Um, the same question, basically, but regarding enforcement of our zoning bylaws, what do you think is the ZA's role in the actual enforcement of the bylaws?
The role is, um, it's a responsibility of the job. You have to do it, you have to, you know, um, write, write by the letter of the law. There's no, no room for interpretation. It is what it is. I would, you know, if I'm responding to a complaint about, from one land onto another, I would, I would want to do some research and see if this has been an ongoing dispute.
Right.
If there's, if there's a record of this issue, how it's been dealt with before.
Sure.
Rather than, you know, uh, new, new zoning administrator, let's try again.
Yeah.
You can count on that.
Right.
We'll get it this time, right? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, good. What do you think is your, would be your degree of discretion, uh, in the enforcement of the zoning bylaws?
Well, by statute, there is no degree of discretion at all. It's, uh, it's, it's plain, it's there. There's no, no wiggle room, no, no, uh, um-
No Mr. Nice guy.
Subjectivity in this. It is what it is. These are, these are the bylaws.
Good answer. What, I'm not supposed to say that when I'm interviewing people, but good answer, Fred.
Yeah, I thought so too.
What, uh, what aspect of your current life, your prior life, you have a pretty impressive resume, I might add. Your education, your background, what do you think would be most valuable to you in the position of ZA?
I'm a lifelong learner. I've been, you know, always, I'm always studying and learning. I learn from experience. I learn from, from reading, from watching, from observing, uh. You know, that, that's one of my strong, my strongest points, um, the way I, I, I work. I like, I like to see the big picture when I kind of work, you know, and I'll, you know, have, I'll structure, you know. I'll take the steps to go through, think all the way through a subject or, you know, a project and make sure I arrive at the, at the appropriate decision.
Yep. Good. Um, along the same lines, how about personal characteristics, do you think, would be a strength, um, in, in your role as ZA?
I'm a natural, I'm a natural advocate for people. I've worked with people with, with, uh, diversity of, of different needs, you know. High, high, very high needs, uh, people in crisis, managed those things. I, you know, I, um, because I'm so observant and, and, and learning and I, I, and I have a lot of empathy with people.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, all of those factors would, would go into, you know, working with an individual, you know. There's, there's been, I think there's going to be a natural, um, apprehension on that person's part, um, depending on who, who it is. If it's a seasoned developer, um, that might be a whole different, different thing.
Sure.
I might have less empathy with them, but, um, you know, somebody, you know, just an everyday working person who wants to do something.
Yeah.
You know, I'm going to be interested in helping, helping in that process along with them and, uh-
Yeah, good.
You know, it's, it's, it's been my life, my life's work, actually, is working with people and diffusing tense situations for them, helping them diffuse.
Who's Jer?
It's her question.
Fred, do you think you'd be more empathetic or less, depending upon whether somebody was PONL board or not?
Um, that really wouldn't, wouldn't be a factor. Um, people are people, no matter where they come from. As, as I said, what I, what I care most about in this town is just the rural character.
Yeah.
Cultures are, are important. I understand some cultures, but, um, as far as wanting to, be more empathetic, empathetic with somebody just because of, you know, I know them from sixty years ago. That's not necessarily, that wouldn't necessarily be my approach. I know a lot of people I don't consider, a lot of people to be friends, you know, so, um, I wouldn't be inclined to go to bat for, um, John, who's been here his whole life, as opposed to-
Me.
Michelle.
Some outsider.
Yeah, good.
But again, again, it's like, that goes to the question of, um, discretion, discretion as well, so it's like-
Sure does.
It does, and it's like, um, to, to, to pull, pull extra strings or anything like that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't cross my mind.
Tell them what they need to hear and not what they want to hear, right?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, and I, you know, I can do that with all fear. I don't, you know, I just don't care, you know. You have to, you have to accept reality.
Yeah.
Yeah. So your twenty hours a week, um, are you going to be able to, uh, to meet the requirements, the hourly requirements here? I think you already answered that before.
Yeah.
You know, what I envision, uh, by the way, I don't know what the hourly requirements are, but I, I thought I'd ask the question anyways, right? So you have to kind of pretend you know what it is. Um, you know, you're going to have to have a, maybe a half a day of, uh, office time, you know, where people have your day, like Nelson has a Sunday.
Right.
You know, have your day where you're posted on the website, you know, the ZA will be here, um, call, make an appointment. So people aren't lined up with asking you questions. You can get to them and you'd be able to do that. You gotta re, you report to us, so you've got to be at our meeting.
Right.
Probably go to most DRB meetings, um, maybe an occasional select board meeting. You go to them all anyway, is what I'm saying. I don't even know why I'm asking.
To do that with a purpose and, and, like I said, it's like, I, I've gotten to a point where I, I choose not to be, you know, challenging or adversarial place in my life anymore. I've gotten to know how, how the government works here in town, um, you know, and, and how, how underpaid everybody is and works, and works for, for the town.
Yeah.
It's got to, you got to be about being here for-
For the town, yeah. Good.
And, you know, my, my hours work a lot. I drive a bus, um, for Green Mountain Community Network. So again, that, that just fits in with my, yeah, therapy.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's therapy for me, sometimes it's therapy for the passengers.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, but it's, it's flexible. It is, it's a flexible thing. I can, you know, I can work my schedule or whatever.
Site visits, all that stuff, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I, I look forward to, to a lot of, um, boots on the ground type work.
Yeah.
Doing the site, site visits, um, clerical work. I would take care of that, make sure it's, you know, there's, there's progress on all, all of, all the paperwork parts that need to be done.
Sure.
The research and stuff like that.
Great. That's all I had, and what I traditionally did was I opened it up. Everybody can ask a question if they want. And then you can close with a statement if you want.
Yep.
Um, but it's pretty flexible. Those are the main things that we wanted to, to hear.
Yeah.
So anybody have anything that they'd like to ask in addition to what I've asked? Fred?
Covered.
Covered it? Uh, Fred, you have anything?
I can make a statement just for Fred's benefit.
Sure.
You know, this job, this job, nobody has a job description, because there ain't one. Some people classify, when you say discretion and this and that. Some people have things. They may have a whole mowing machine on their lawn or something like that. It's a beautiful piece of-
Oh, yeah, right.
Something like that.
Yeah.
It's in their mind, you know, things like that. And all I want to know is, uh, you always seem pretty, pretty subdued. If and when the town ever does pass any meaningful laws, which we don't have. People can say what they want. We don't have meaningful laws, so we go most-
Looking right at you.
No, it's my fault. Keep it up here doing that, doing this. I'm saying, it's just gonna, it's gonna be tough for whoever gets that zoning administrator guy. I don't want somebody in here like some cowboy coming in here and think he's going to change the town. If that's what you're going to be, I don't want you to.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But I want you to.
Yeah.
But I, but I don't think you got anything to work with.
No.
And I tell them other people, same thing. They got anything to work with either. We got to pass whatever we want.
Yeah.
If we want to follow the state, which I'm playing with that, because I'm, I'm kind of liberal. You want to follow the state stuff, it's fine.
He almost said that straight face of-
Did you just say that on camera?
Are you being ironic over there in the corner?
Said that on camera, said that on camera. We'll have Park and Ride down here by Ronnie's house pretty soon.
Oh, my God.
I, I think that's a good point, though.
Yeah.
It is a good point.
You know, because it's not as clear-cut as we would like to make it or as you might foresee it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, referring to the, to proposed junk ordinance.
That's one thing.
Yeah.
My, my approach is always, um, in, in the beginning passive. If I'm, if I am sent to, to, to talk to somebody about something, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a passive approach at first, you know, and de-escalate any, 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 any emotion that gets, gets up, starts going up there, um, and, and try to have a reasonable conversation with the person.
Yep.
Now, I understand, I understand being attached to something, you know, it could be sentimental attachment. It could be, my father gave me that lawnmower, you know, and he's gone. And it's like, that's my, that's my monument to him.
Now's the time to move it out behind the barn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're compassionate.
Guys are getting, I've got to tear my eye out here.
Yeah, I know.
This is a great story.
Yeah.
But it's like, I think there, I think there's a way to talk to people and, you know-
Sure.
To go in with guns blazing and, and with it like authority.
You start a war, you're going to get one, right?
I've got the authority to tell you, get rid of that right now, and you're going to get rid of it or else.
Right.
That's not probably going to, going to win many people over. It's not going to, probably not going to accomplish the goal.
I, I'll add to what Ronnie said too. What's often not happened here is that you need the backing, clearly, of this planning commission, but more importantly, you need the backing of our select board.
Anybody in ZA's office.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, uh, they can't be wishy-washy on when they're going to support you and when they're not going to support you.
And as with anything too, there's a learning curve to, and it's like, advice, advice, give me advice.
Yeah.
If I, if I can come to the planning commission, you know, like, like you said, attending the meetings and stuff like that, you know, it might be, you know, I might be able to, to, I have, I have a problem trying to figure out. I can't quite find the one, the one thing here. I need advice.
Yeah, absolutely. Or a clarification of bylaw or-
Jimmy, you had a question?
Well, no, I was just thinking of several things going on, but it just, what do you want to be damned for? Because you're going to be damned.
Oh, yeah.
It's just fifty, you're not going to please anybody, and I'm just thinking of this deal with the four women.
So that's a really, yeah.
Well, that'd be ordinance, not bylaw, fortunately, for Fred.
Being damned though, you're not going to-
Yeah, somebody, if somebody's going to be happy, somebody's going to be mad, right? John?
Um, I was just going to say is, uh, would you be able, in reverse of that, would you be able to go out and get that information and bring it back to the boards? Saying that's the rule we have in place is not working well, that kind of thing? Would you be able to?
Yeah, I might, I might not make that judge, that judgment, but, you know, I could say that here, here's, here's, here's another wrinkle.
Hmm, yes.
We can discuss it.
Here's what I keep running into.
This is what I'm running into. Maybe, you know, maybe we can like revisit this and maybe soften it a little bit.
Sure.
Or, or come up with a criteria where, where, you know, um, you know, some, something that, something that I can hold, hold forward to that person and say, you know, it's, it's find, it's find a place where we can get together on this thing.
Sure.
Get it resolved. But again, like I said, my, my approach to any, any kind of complaint that I'm going to respond to, I'm going to do some research. I want to look at records and see if this, if this has been an ongoing thing and if the previous zoning administrator, administrator has already dealt with it.
Yeah.
And resolved the issue.
Yeah, set a precedent.
In, in the mind of the, of the homeowner or, or the person.
Right.
If it's been, if it's been resolved in his mind, it's like to, to, to go and like pick the scab, but it's like, it's not the, not the best way to go.
Right. I agree. Anybody else? Do you have anything you want to add?
Nope, no, I just, you know, I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity-
Yeah.
-to, to interview for this. You know, I've given a lot of, I didn't, I didn't apply- You know, I've given a lot of, I didn't apply for it lightly. It's like, you know, I thought about it, thought about it. It's like, you know, this could be, you know, a way for me to channel my energy and to be helpful to the town.
It's an extremely important position, especially...
This town is, to me, is very important. My roots are very, very deep here. I've seen the town when it was really busy, when the horses were here, when it raced track. Good old days, you know, there were good things about it, but there were bad things about it, too. So... How much do I want to see happen here? I don't know. I just, I do know that we have to grow, need to have something going on. You know, my sons have all moved away, and yours did, too.
Exactly, exactly right. Not much keeping them here for a long time. Fred, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Listening to me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for coming in and thanks for coming in a week late. That was our fault.
I came as soon as I found out. Thanks a lot.
Thanks for your interest.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Fred. Okay, mail is next. We'll just go over this. Tonell Wamestown Zoning Board of Appeals has a final decision notice on the Ganjimi property here. There's a whole procedural history. There were a couple of butters that didn't quite like what he was doing. This has already been decided. I'll pass it around. Everybody can take a look at it if you like. The hearing dates were May 16th, oh, and June 20th, so they just had the final hearing date. So, as I said, and there are two of them. The second one is Philip Besnard. Now, some of these are close to Ponnell property. It's White Oaks Road. And somewhere up on White Oaks Road, it turns in a Ponnell, so you want to pass that one around? Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Credit Corporation has, let's see... These things have usually already occurred by the time I get them to you. I'll try and be better about this. Bill of expertise, municipalities, organizations. So, this looks just like a newsletter, even though the project has, even though the project has come to an end. That's all I needed to read. Good. Here's from the state of Vermont, wastewater system and potable water supply permit for landowners Lisa Miss Brenner and Synthony Legay, L-E-G-G-E, is that right? On Watershed Road.
Lake.
It's a lake.
Watershed Road, yeah. Oh, lake. Oh, L-E-G-G-E. Yeah, okay.
It's not the French for this.
So, this is a successful permit, right?
Not yet.
Not yet, on the water. Water. Potable water permit for the state. Okay. That concludes everything on our agenda. The only thing left to do is to make a recommendation to the select board for our zoning administrator. And Sid had mentioned before that we should probably do yet another straw poll and rate everybody, one through four.
I think we should reverse it from last time, because the winner last time got the least number of votes.
And the way of doing it, I know, but you do this, if you do this in a straw, you're not discussing personnel matters. We can, I'll entertain always an executive session.
Yeah, I think it should be an executive session.
Make the things see what you want to say.
Should we have discussion before we vote? That's the question.
All right. Do we have a motion to go in an executive session?
Nobody here. Why bother?
Well, there's...
Well, you can turn that off.
Okay, that's what that would be. That would be executive session.
Would you turn that off, sir?
We're in executive session. Thanks. We're back on. Thank you. Conclusion of our executive session, I will entertain a motion to recommend Michael Gardner as zoning administrator to the select board.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Good.
Just no, no opposes.
No opposed. What was that, were you practicing for some other time?
Now, what are we supposed to take out of our folders and throw away?
Okay, so, yes, listen to the secretary here.
Okay.
You guys can just take anything out of your folders that you don't want.
Okay.
I know some people like to hold on to things, and I don't want to throw it away on you. So, if you just look through your folders, throw away stuff that you don't want on that.
The secretary's required to release for five years, a statute of limitations.
When I was first working at my law firm, I had a research project in the law library, and I had a stack of books, this is before computers, a stack of books and notes and stuff like that. And I wrote on it, P-L-S-S-A-V-E. And the gleaming lady came in and said, "What's please save?"
Oh, man.
Where was she from? What country?
All right, so, next meeting, I gave the date of that. Rosemarie? You said, oh...
Oh, I was going to remind about the books, but then I see them right in front of you, so.
Yes. So, I think every member should have a nice squeaky clean and carry it with them and be prepared to answer questions.
And have it memorized by the next meeting.
Yes, absolutely. So, please take a town plan.
And do we have a copy of the current bylaws?
Can I get back the old one?
You've got a copy, this book.
No, there's none of those left.
None of these left? You want to give it to me? You want to borrow it?
Because we're going to end it.
Right. Yeah, it's just, you know, when I see his things, I'm not, I'm not seeing the section.
You can look on with me.
Okay.
Or if you need it to do research in the interim, give me a call. I'll bring mine over. There are two copies out in front.
Oh, if there's two copies, I can just come here and read.
There are two copies out in front.
Okay.
One says Town Clerk on it, I think, and the other one is the second one that you made, I think.
Because we're only doing the section of the town.
I have got photocopies if you want. They're just not bound.
Oh, that's fine. Jessica, do you still need these from us?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Only if you want to get paid.
But I did even buy.
Oh, you emailed yours in?
Yeah.
You're also, I'll take it just in case.
Okay, I'll just, I'll do it.
Better safe than sorry.
Okay.
I deleted mine, Jessica.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We got a second? I think the same guy who made the motion just checking it, but that's all right. It's late. Okay, all right, all right. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed to adjourned? I didn't think so. I keep meaning to check with Jim Sullivan to see if we even need a motion to adjourn or do we just all get up and walk?